Good evening. Thank you for attending the council meeting this evening. And we have, we had a closed session, which we have been having quite a few closed sessions before our council meetings. And one of the reasons is we have litigation, that people are thinking of suing us or something, and we have to talk about that in private. And we aren't able to release that information to anyone and tell you what's going on. So some of you may see that and wonder what's happening, but that's actually what's happening. So this evening, we have another thing that we will have no Zoom. We have technical issues with Zoom. The other night, we had technical issues with our microphones. And tonight, we have technical issues with Zoom. More volume? Maybe I'll have to get closer. So, so there will not be Zoom comments this evening on, on any oral communications. So with that, I would like to ask you all to stand for the, well, wait, I'm going to do the land acknowledgement first. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land, and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So the next item on the agenda is the flag salute. You may join us if you wish.
Our pledge of allegiance to flag of the United States of America, the country of which stands nation.
Thank you. May we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Present.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So we, tonight, we have one ceremonial matter, and that's a proclamation in recognition of the National Pace Month, September 2025. And so Councilmember White is going to read the proclamation. Thank you. So whereas the elderly population in Arcata and throughout Humboldt County is growing rapidly, with a significant impact on health, care, needs, and costs, and whereas, the program of all-inclusive care for the elderly pace is a fully integrated, comprehensive model of care that allows older adults who qualify for a nursing home level of care to continue living safely and independently in their homes and communities. And whereas participants enrolled in pace receive all Medicare and Medicaid-covered services, along with additional support such as rehabilitation, transportation, nutrition, social engagement, and family caregiver assistance that promote overall health and wellbeing. And whereas pace programs assume full financial responsibility for participants, medical care, and related services, including transportation, hospitalization, and long-term care through capital payments for Medicare and Medicaid, thereby helping to control costs for the state while improving quality of care. And whereas Redwood Coast Pace, a program of the Humboldt Senior Resource Center, has served more than 650 older adults in Humboldt County, with day centers located in Fortuna, Eureka, and now Arcata, providing a trusted local resource for families and seniors alike. And whereas pace has consistently demonstrated improved health outcomes, greater participant satisfaction, and enhanced quality of life for older adults while supporting families and strengthening communities. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes the month of September 2025 as National Pace Month, and encourages all its citizens to recognize the importance of Redwood Coast Pace in ensuring dignity, independence, and quality of care for our community seniors. Dated September 17th, 2025 by our mayor Alexandra Stillman, and this will be accepted today by Barbara Leahy.
Hi, I'm Barbara Leahy. I'm the director of the Redwood Coast Pace Program. And thank you so much for this proclamation and supporting our program. When we started 11 years ago, prior to that, we had to do a feasibility study, and they outlined that we would probably have 130 participants and level off. And I'm proud to be here 11 years later, and we have 200, or 369 participants in our program. We continue to get calls every day. I think we have 50 already this month. And we have three different sites. We thought we were going to stay in Arcata, or stay in Eureka, and we expanded in 2020 into Fortuna, and then just this year into Arcata. We're really excited. Each of our centers have a day center where participants can come for the day, play games, have some activities, get to know each other, have a good meal, but they also have a whole rehabilitation gym, and we have a clinic at each of the sites. We have the highest penetration rate nationwide of all pace programs, which means the eligible population, we serve the highest amount in any of the programs, and we're very proud about that. It's a model of care that we would all want, a one-stop shop, a wraparound, a person-centered approach, where you get, as the proclamation said, you know, transportation and home care, meals, a social worker, primary care, a nurse, and coordination of all of your appointments and arrangements out of the area. It's more efficient and less expensive. We reduce hospitalizations, institutional care, enroll, you know, admittance into skilled nursing facilities. So we're really, we're very proud of our program. And we're doing it, we're celebrating at each of our sites. So we have open houses next Thursday here in Arcata from 4:30 to 7 o'clock, and then we have one in Eureka on October 2nd, and then in Fortuna on October 16th. So we look forward to hopefully seeing some of you, and again, thank you so much for your support. We could not have done it in this community without the community support. Proud to be here, and I have some.
Thank you very much for opening a facility in Arcata. Much appreciated.
We appreciate it. It was a lot of hard work, but worth it to see the participants coming in, and excited to.
Thank you.
Hang out.
The next item on the agenda is reports by commissions or committees, and we have none this evening. So we'll go on to number six, which is staff reports. All reports shall be specifically limited to city business and shall not request or lead to action by the council at this meeting. A, receive an update from Equity Arcata team, Mo Harper Desir. Is, is sir. Desire, okay. Fernando Paz and Anna Martinez regarding Equity Arcata. So, please come forward, and thank you very much for being here this evening.
Alright, good evening. Good evening, everyone and community. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on Equity Arcata. My name is Mo Harper Desire, and I serve as co-manager alongside my colleague, who I'm joined by tonight, Fernando Paz. And tonight, we're going to take you through an update on who we are, what we do, what we've been up to since our last update in January, and some upcoming ways you can get involved. And so very briefly, Equity Arcata is a formal partnership between Cal Poly Humboldt and the city of Arcata. Together, we are committed to providing a welcoming, safe, inclusive, and racially equitable community. This commitment extends to students, faculty, and staff, as well as all residents of Arcata and the surrounding communities.
Starting in 2017, since the beginning, the city, the city manager's office has served as the lead city organization and fiscal agent. The university's Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion has been the lead campus partner and fiscal agent. Together, these two anchor institutions carry out the day-to-day responsibilities of.
Our purpose is simple but vital, and it's to create a welcoming, safe, and racially equitable community.
Our purpose is, oh, Equity Arcata supports the community in three key ways. First, by connecting resources to local initiatives and community projects. Second, by fostering collaboration between campus and partners. And third, by creating spaces to listen, chat, and respond to the needs of our.
So in practice, this looks like cultural event support, equity workshops and trainings, internships and fellowships, local business connections, the sponsorship of community events, ongoing learning opportunities, and one of our programs, which is called the Home Away From Home project.
So the internal workings of our organization, this chart shows how Equity Arcata connects Cal Poly Humboldt, the city of Arcata, and the broader community through shared leadership and collaborative planning. Input from both the campus and committee flows into Equity Arcata staff and advisory committee, which guides initiatives and creates spaces.
Our work is guided by both dedicated staff and advisory voices. So the current Equity Arcata team includes myself, Fernando Paz as my co-manager, and we have two student workers, Nizelle Liguad and Anna Martinez.
We are also supported by the advisory committee and active members across the city and university who ensure that our work stays connected to real community needs and advances the purpose of.
So here are some of our active committee members, and you can see a great group of local community members, organizations, and different entities.
On the city side of things, Equity Arcata is focused on strengthening communication, coordination, and accountability within the city hall procedures and among staff. The CARES Working Group, which stands for Community Attention, Respect, Evaluation, and Solidarity, meets monthly. This group allows staff to identify needs and shape how the city hall becomes more open, caring.
A new step forward that we are releasing this fall is our Community Development Grant. And through this grant, Equity Arcata will connect resources to existing partnerships and programs, both community-based and campus-based, that foster belonging. This grant will target projects and initiatives that are supported both by the community and campus with relationships that are already fostered and building, and the grant will strengthen what already worked and deepen collaboration.
Competitive applications will speak to the ongoing relationship between Cal Poly Humboldt and the community. Encourage exchange between two, the two communities and foster positive impact.
Some of on, some of our ongoing focuses that haven't produced events or programming yet is our goal to build belonging, create visibility, and ensure equity as a part of everyday life in Arcata and at Cal Poly Humboldt. This is not one-time work. It is continuous, and it adapts as our community grows and changes. And that looks like developing deep relationships with local police departments, both in Arcata and on campus, convening and building with Cal Poly Humboldt's cultural centers and groups, and gathering delegations for cultural exchange with Oaxaca, Mexico.
Beyond grants, our collaboration shows up in community life. Equity Arcata works hard to participate and collaborate with ongoing community and campus events. Through this engagement, Equity Arcata is present and visible where our community gathers.
And so over the summer, in July, we celebrated a new space in the Annex over near the Transit Center, featuring tours, games, refreshments, and some community engagement. We've asked the community some questions. The evening concluded with a community outing to the Humboldt Crabs game, where attendees received free tickets, and we all participated together.
On August 15th, Equity Arcata hosted vending, vending and networking sessions to support business owners and vendors with resources, connections, and practical tools.
On August 23rd, Equity Arcata collaborated and stood in solidarity with Centro de Pueblo in a sanctuary day that included a rolling demonstration, speeches at the Arcata Farmer's Market, a march from the Plaza to the Hardin Sanctuaryo, and performances at the Sanctuary Garden.
On September 7th, the Home Away From Home potluck welcomed 135 students to the D Street Neighborhood Community Center with shared meals, alcohol supplies, and relationship building with the wider community.
We also had the privilege of participating in a number of community gatherings, such as Spring Preview on campus, the Redwood Pride Event in June, the Multicultural Festival in July, Oyster Fest, the Oban Festival, Fall Orientation, Move-In Weekend, and the Friday Night Markets. Through these outreach opportunities, we were able to connect with small businesses, new students, and members that belong to different social groups and organizations, all of which directly impacts and informs our work.
Some of our upcoming events and things to look out for, we have an exciting calendar of, yeah, we have some things coming up. On Friday, September 26th, we will be at the Friday Night Market on the Arcata Plaza. On Friday, October, October 3rd, we are hosting Tarviada at the D Street Community Neighborhood Center, where we'll be bringing together all the local Latino affinity organizations with the organization. For a, as part of Latino Heritage Month. Fedor will be happening on campus from October 20th to the 24th. Equity Arcata will be hosting the Connection Zone in hopes to foster connection and belonging amongst community members. The zone specifics are to be announced, and you are also welcome to commit to the one that you worked up. On Sunday, October 26th, we will partner with the, with Peer Humboldt and the ERC, the Eric L. Resource Center, for the Peer Museum at the D Street Neighborhood Center. And then on Sunday, December 7th, we will, we will gather again for the Home Away From Home potluck, also at the D Street Neighborhood.
So finally, we want to make sure you know how to stay connected. You can find more information on all the events we just spoke about. And you can follow us on social media at Equity Arcata. You can also use your phone for the code, and it will bring you to that. We also will do the same for our website, which is www.equityarcata.org. And then we also have a monthly newsletter that we send at the beginning of the month. It summarizes the events that we're supporting and posting, as well as informs on different groups on campus, different resources on campus, different alleys available through the city, and different projects going on at the city, as well as a few learning lessons with differing topics that relate to the work that Equity Arcata does. So thank you so much.
For your time and your time, thank you.
Thank you. So does the council have questions?
They would like to ask.
Well, we really appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you for coming, and look forward to all the things that you're doing. And thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is B, receive a presentation from the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County regarding Letter of Support for All Humboldt County Community Members. So you, would you like to come forward? Thank you. Yes, right there, you can come forward, Dan. And thank you for being here with us this evening.
You're very welcome. Good evening. So I'm Anne Hartline. I'm representing today the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County. I'm on the board. I know our president was hoping to join me, but it looks like she got delayed at work, which is totally understandable. So I do have a copy of our, the Humboldt County Support for All Humboldt County Community Members letter, and I'll leave that with you. I'm going to summarize a little bit, and then take some questions if you'd like. So over the last 10 months, a little bit over that, the boards of supervisors of numerous California counties, beginning initially with Santa Cruz and Sonoma Counties, have voiced their concerns about policy changes at the federal level regarding the treatment of immigrants and immigration, as well as the treatment of all other marginalized people in their communities. They have each publicly endorsed a community support letter outlining their support for immigrants, who include family members, friends, coworkers, and neighbors, and who have a legal right to live and work in the United States. They have also agreed to unequivocally defend these policies. So focusing in here, beginning in January, the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County Board, members of that board, including myself, worked to prepare a Humboldt County version of the support letter referred to above that I just mentioned. Our efforts to secure some, excuse me, community support began with the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission. With modifications, the Human Rights Commission Board agreed unanimously to support the Humboldt County version of the letter. Next, the commission took the support letter before the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, who made some additional modifications, and then voted unanimously to support the letter as well. The Board of the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County also voted in May and again in July with our new board for the 2526 year to support the letter. Since then, League of Women Voters of Humboldt County members continue working to enlist support and garner signatures from additional community organizations and community members. We have the statement up, maybe some of you saw it, at the Fourth of July festivals, both here in Arcata and in Eureka, and we'll have it up again at the North Country Fair this coming weekend. Numerous organizations and individuals have joined and supported these efforts in our community. We know that a united front is important to protecting community members, including immigrants, from further intimidation and harm. So why I am here, the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County, along with all the organizations that I mentioned, asks for your support for the community support letter that you will soon hold in front of you. Our goal is to publish the support letter and the names of all signees through local media outlets in October. And I know you will not be able to vote until early October, but that will be fine. So we, that's not a problem. We want our community to know that we stand up for the rights of all people in Humboldt County. And I want to, you will have this in a minute, but I just wanted to read you the very beginning, which of the, of the letter, and tell you a little bit about it. So the, the community support letter begins this way, with these two paragraphs. "We acknowledge the climate of concern within our community. Many residents have expressed deep apprehension about the hateful rhetoric and the global growing divide currently evidenced across our nation, concerns that we fully share. We seek to assure our community that we will continue to stand firmly in support of our family members, friends, coworkers, and neighbors, no matter where they are from, what language they speak, who they love, how they worship, or how they vote. As local government and community leaders, we specifically and unequivocally reaffirm our commitment to supporting all residents in our community." And then the letter goes on, which I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but it goes on to list the legal and policy protections already in place at the state and local levels, including Humboldt County's Sanctuary Ordinance, Measure K, the California Values Act, SB 54, the Truth Act, AB 2792, the Trust Act, AB 4, and the California Education Code. Whatever the future holds, we are resilient and ready to meet any challenges. "Whatever the future holds, we are resilient and ready to meet any challenges presented to our community." And the letter ends this way. "We, the undersigned agencies and elected officials within Humboldt County, remain committed to ensuring that our county is a place where all individuals are valued for their unique contributions and where every resident can live without fear."
Thank you very much. So, are there any comments or questions from the council? Well, we look forward to having your letter and proceeding as.
I will say one thing, too. If perchance the letter is not endorsed by the entire council, we would still welcome individual council members joining us on the letter as well.
Thank you very much for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is it open to all community members and organizations?
Yes, please. Yes, please. One of the challenges, as you can imagine, is, I mean, I'd like to get to every city council and every school board, and it's a big task. So, yes, we would embrace having other people sign on. We've got, as I said, the Board of Supes, League of Women Voters Board, Human Rights Commission. We have over 50 additional local residents and some church groups, and the Mick Mack in McKinleville. So, absolutely, we would welcome.
Could you direct people where they could find the letter?
Sure. I think it is on our website, our league website. I'll make sure that I get it up there if it is not. It was in our league, we have a publication, our voter, which I know is on the website, and it's in that, but that's maybe a little bit more embedded. I'm also more than welcome to have people reach out to me. Or you can also reach out to the League of Women Voters and email us. So, yes, we welcome all community members who'd like to sign on. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you very much, Anne. We appreciate you coming this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll go on to C, which is Other Staff Reports. Okay. We have oral and written communications. It's early communications. The city values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council. A matter is not on the agenda. This early section of a public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time for public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under Item 12, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There is also will be time to provide public comments specific to each item on the agenda. So, at this time, if you would come forward, please, you're number one. This gentleman behind you is number one. Can he come number one? That's the second number one. Oh, just go ahead. We'll have number one and number one. Thank you.
My name is Sean, and I've lived in Humboldt County in Arcata since 1989, and I'm a bicycle rider. I've never driven a car. And lately, I've been riding an electric bike, and electric bikes are heavier and have wider tires. And I've gotten about seven flats in the last six months. And so, the first time I got a flat was a big steel rod. Second time was...
Okay. Hey, we're live again. If you would like to start your comments, please.
Thank you. My name is Abraham, and I live in Arcata. I've addressed you a few times, asking you not to act against the Jews or their nation, and I feel like my voice hasn't been heard. Upon self-reflection, I realize that I have allowed myself to get swept away in a fight against Jew haters instead of focusing on what Israel has been fighting for all this time, the hostages. When it comes to innocent women, children, and elderly, including Holocaust survivors, by the way, taken by Hamas, we really are looking at a cause that transcends political divides. No one, regardless of their perspective on the broader conflict, wants to see the hostages' suffering continue. The Jew haters have been given what they asked for, part of it, and it's our turn to ask you to look into the blind spot created by their division and hate mongering and see the true casualties of this war. So, we are asking you to pass a resolution calling for the immediate and unconditional release of all the hostages in Gaza. Our representatives in Washington, Sacramento, and the UN need to know that we care about them, too. Hamas constantly reminds us that the clock is ticking. Look at the clock there, folks. The hostages don't have much longer to live. I've sent you a draft of the resolution and would be happy to work with you on wording or whatever else is needed so that it can hopefully be put on the agenda and adopted without delay. If you're looking for common ground, this is where you will find it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please, come forward. Thank you. It's hard for me to know who's who, but, okay. First ones are green, and then we go to yellow. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Pat Kansleron. I'm a nurse. I want to speak about what's going on in Palestine. And the UN right now will be voting tomorrow. They've already decided that it is a genocide, and they're voting tomorrow whether they should bypass the Security Council and just send peacekeepers to Gaza and humanitarian aid. I want to say that our government is using a foreign entity to make decisions in this country, which is actually very traitorous. So, we can't depend on our leadership at all. And I also want to say that there are 1,000 Jews in Geneva, Jewish Voices for Peace, and I'm one of them. And those 1,000 voices are actually asking for an embargo on weapons to Israel and a sanctioning of Israel because they are imperialistic. They have nuclear weapons, and they haven't signed on to anything. So, they are a danger to this entire world. And the reason why I'm saying all this is because we need to bypass our country and have a sister city, Wisconsin, so we can give them humanitarian aid that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Jody, and I am here to urge you to act immediately to adopt and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata calling for the immediate release of all hostages by Hamas. I would like to remind you how the current war between Israel and Gaza started. On October 7th, 2023, Hamas terrorists invaded Israel, genocided over 1,200 civilians, and injured several thousand more before the IDF was able to subdue them. This first photo is from the forensic evidence from that attack. It is the burnt remains of a mother and child who were bound together with metal wire and burnt alive. It took a CT scan of the remains to identify who these people were. Hamas carried GoPro cameras to record their atrocities and livestreamed them to the world. This is just one example of many war crimes committed on that day by Hamas. They also took 251 hostages, of which 48 hostages still remain in Gaza, including two Americans. These next two photos are of hostages kidnapped from the Nova Music Festival, very much like reggae on the river. We all know that the war will not end until all the hostages are returned. Monday, you passed a resolution in support of humanitarian aid for Gazans. Are you willing to treat the lives of innocent Israeli hostages equally? Hamas has stated they're going to move the hostages above ground and use them as human shields. Now is your opportunity to show the citizens here in Arcata that you value all people. Please take this opportunity to pass a simple resolution to show your humanity and support for Arcata Jewish citizens. We are waiting for you to show us that you support our suffering, too.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening.
My name is Ella. I don't have anything written tonight. I am just here to support the resolution to release all remaining hostages from Gaza, where they are starving them and torturing them to death, sending pictures of their starving bodies to torture their parents. If we could just release the hostages, the war would be over. I am here to strongly agree that we should pass that resolution.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi. My name's Joanne McCarry, and I'll do three things if I can in two minutes. First of all, I go to the County Board of Supervisors meetings on occasion, more often now than in the past. The clerk of the Board of the County Board of Supervisors at public comment time at the last Board of Supervisors meeting let people know, and the supervisors know, that there are five vacancies on the Human Rights Commission currently for the County Human Rights Commission. I got a copy of the application, and I can make copies for anyone watching or in the room now if they're interested in being on the Human Rights Commission. We have a lot of committees and commissions in our community that need dedicated, caring people to be a part of them. So, here's one of them, human rights, what we're talking about right now. So, that's that. The second thing I want to talk about is, it's really worth looking back. This has become attached to me, this resolution for a ceasefire that we declared as a city unanimously on March 6th of 2024. And I really do think that it had a lot of important things in it, including release of the hostages and other political captive prisoners in Israel. So, it wasn't one-sided. And it also talked about humanitarian aid. So, I'd like to get specific about humanitarian aid. There's a global Samudh flotilla. Greta Thunberg's on board. Over 44 countries, many, many boats, dozens of boats, heading to Gaza legally on international waters. May they get there and be able to provide aid. Finally, I'd just like to ask the council to revisit some of the protocols and procedures for the meetings, because three minutes used to be at the end of the meeting, and it hasn't been lately.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Well, we don't have Zoom, so we're concluding our early communications now. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were.
Good evening. My name is Mike Edwards. I've been a resident of Arcata for over 30 years, and I've spent the last 28 years... I've been a resident of Arcata for over 30 years and I've spent the last 28 years up on I Street next to Todd Court. Recently, Cal Poly Humboldt has opened their new dorms with 500 new students attending there. Unfortunately, they've not opened an adequate number of parking spaces. And as a consequence, our streets are filled with cars, to the point where I have collected signatures from residents within the neighborhood and filed paperwork for the creation of a preferential parking, residential parking zone. I had the pleasure yesterday of attending the Transportation Safety Committee meeting and giving them a copy of all of the signatures that we had. The original signatures were forwarded to the police department as is required. The preferential parking zone, I believe, is necessary, especially with the recent realignment of zoning within that area of Arcata, moving from a low-density residential to high-density residential, which means the remaining undeveloped land within that area will need additional residential parking. Unfortunately, that residential parking will be needed by the residents of the neighborhood and not the students of the dorms. We would like to get a new residential zone established as soon as possible and especially before the additional dorm opens in January. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Consideration in this matter. I hope to see it as an agenda item soon.
Well, thank you very much for bringing that forward. That is, I know that is an issue. And I know the city is looking into that. And also the university is looking into locating additional house parking elsewhere but not there. So we'll see how that plays out. But thank you for coming tonight and going to the Traffic Committee, Transportation Committee. So we'll move on if there is no one else here for oral communications. Thank you. We'll go on to the consent calendar. Approval to waive reading of the text and consent to read by the title only of any ordinance on this agenda. Approve the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of September 3, 2025. Approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of September 3, 2025. Buy reports on dispersments, bi-weekly, monthly dispersment reports. Number E, adopt resolution number 256-10, adopting permanent local housing allocation owner occupied rehabilitation program guidelines. California Environmental Equality Act, CEQA, exempt per the common sense exemption. F, award a contract amendment in the amount of $327,000 and $870 to GHD Inc. for an additional engineering and design services for US 101 Sunset Avenue Interchange Improvement Project and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, reappoint Jim Zolick to the Energy Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2028. H, reappoint Jill McDonald and Jeanette Cooper to Historic Landmarks Committee, each for a term expiring September 20th, 2028. I approve a contract amendment with GHD Inc. for professional services to support the construction phase of the Annie and Mary Trail Project in the amount of $86,681.60 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Okay. And K? Okay. J, approve sponsor... Oh, now you probably can hear me. Thank you. Approve sponsorship in the amount equivalent to the Plaza event fees of $1,981 for the Samuel People's North Country Fair to be held on the Arcata Plaza September 20th and 21st, 2025. K, adopt resolution number 256-11, establishing the Community Benefits Program. Action not subject to additional CEQA Environmental Quality Act review. Are there any items on the agenda anyone would like to withdraw?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second. A second.
Okay. And so is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary and again, when money is involved on a consent calendar, I'm just interested in clarification sometimes. And so this GHD contract, it's additional $86,000-plus compared to the existing monies that were already allocated of $95,000. And I do realize that on big, huge projects like this, additional funds are sometimes required. But I just wanted to be clear that we're talking about, there was an initial $95,000 allocated for this project and now they're asking for another contract of $86,000. And is that my correct reading of this? Uh, your mic, your mic's not on.
I'm sorry.
What did you say? I couldn't hear you.
That's exactly what it says in this document.
Okay, I'll hear it on the replay.
Well, you asked for the amount in the document and that's what it says. So would you like to speak on the consent calendar, please?
Hi, I'm Alex Ozaki McNeil. I am the director of the North Country Fair and just wanted to say thank you for adding a consent calendar for today and that's coming up this weekend. And on behalf of my board, the Samuel People, we typically break even and make enough money to plan the fair again the next year. So the assistance is really appreciated and all of the staff work that goes towards the traffic control plan and processing business licenses and the permit is really appreciated. We really like having this event in the city of Arcata. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, can we have a vote? All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. There's no old business. So now we'll go on to number 11, which is new business, hold a public hearing to consider and adopt resolution number 256-05, confirming city costs incurring from abatement nuisance conditions at 2579 Baldwin Street and approving collection of costs at a special assessment. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. As you mentioned, the city is recommend, staff is recommending that you hold a public hearing to consider and adopt resolution number 256-05, confirming $10,686.44 in city costs incurred to abate nuisance conditions at 2579 Baldwin Street, authorize city manager to execute all applicable documents. Quick little slideshow. I'll go through it really quick. Please let me know if you want me to go back. Going back, the complaints go back even further. This is just the oldest photo I found. Shows that conditions are not bad, even though there was complaint. Then it progresses, three, late 2023, four, and then five. And early 25, city manager asks us to look into the process and do an abatement. So we spoke to police and legal and got the abatement warrant. Hired New Life Services to haul away a lot of material and clean it up. And that's the amount incurred, city, and we'd like to collect. And this is what it looked like on March 24th after New Life Services was... Any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
I just wanted to clarify, this is complaint-driven and this is one of many that we do throughout the city.
Yeah, this is a, an abatement. We don't do a significant number of abatements. We do a lot of code enforcement, a lot of letters. Abatement is a higher level than... Hopefully, we wouldn't have to do more than one or two a year.
So when I was, I was on a ride along with a policeman and that was one of the areas we went and checked. And that was probably almost three years ago. And then when I was walking door to door in that neighborhood, I was talking to a resident and he was moving because of the condition and that it was impossible to deal with it. And so I'm glad that we've finally been able to figure out what to do. So I know there's more to the story and that you're only giving us part of the story and part of the story I remember the resident telling me about. So I think it's really imperative that we do this and make it work for the neighborhood as a whole because they do suffer. So with that, what kind of action would you appreciate? I will, but I'm going to see what kind of action you want us to take. We'll take a motion on this. We'll have to take public comment, yes. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Would be appropriate, I think, if we open the...
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone getting up. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Great. And I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 256-05, confirming $10,686.44 in city costs incurred to abate nuisance conditions at 2579 Baldwin Street, Arcata, and collect the said costs via special assessment and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
A second.
Thank you. Any comments on the motion? All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. So we'll go on to item B.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt real quick? Councilman Vice Mayor, why? I just didn't hear your vote.
Aye. Thank you. We'll go on to item B, award a contract in the amount of $500,000 to Smith Group, Inc. for the professional services for planning, community outreach, and preliminary concept design for Reconnect Arcata project. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. And some staff here. So item in front of you today is a word of contract to Smith Group for the planning for the Reconnect Arcata project. We do have some slides for you and we'll go through that. And before I do that, senior project manager Laura, he's on this. He'll be heading this project forward. So he will be doing some slides. I will just go over maybe some background on the reconnecting communities, Highway to Boulevard. Go on slides, but in 2020, we got very... And we were selected, one of the 20 cities in California, in partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt, Caltrans, and HDA working together. They invited us to submit an application to be selected for this project. And out of the 20 cities, we were one of the cities that... At the end, in early 2024, they selected three cities, one city being in San Diego, second city being South San Francisco, and the third, here. We were selected and we were selected to do a project in the amount of $140 million, which will be equally divided among three cities and to the reconnecting communities project. However, due to budget short, they were not able to commit on that. So it got pushed by six. They will be dividing that project exactly in half and it will be $75 million and awarding each city $25 million project. And we were still happy. As of early 2025, it was in the state budget and everything was good. We were happy. Forward, we had shared our RFP, RFQ to get the consultants on board to start the planning project. Community was excited. We were excited. We wanted to do the work. However, as we're doing the project, still in our budget, the way that our budget is approved is for the planning work of $3 million. We can plan to do planning work for $3 million, which includes full public engagement, planning for the two of the city where we have highways. It was a big task for $3 million. However, in May, we learned that fire in LA and that they have to give funds and they want to... However, we have already done the RFP US and the community was excited. We wanted to move forward. Hence, we, as an internal team, decided maybe we should use internal city funds to do maybe initial work. Any project we do in the city in the last, I would say, 20 years, 10 years, we always had a match. An example of Foster Avenue, the general fund had put some match for the... That time, $3 million project, there was a city match of $200,000. Annie Mary Trail, Sunset Avenue, Old Rocket Road, any capital project that we do needs... We could treat this as a match fund towards the big project that will happen in future. Not a lot, but for a small city, $500,000 is a lot. Sorry, sorry. So half a million is a lot of money for a small city. You okay? Okay. So sorry. So we have done a lot of match for capital projects. So this could be as a match fund, you know, once we put, start the project. This will put us in a better position for future. I know maybe this, right now, there's not a lot of excitement about federal grants, but we believe it will change. And in future, if we do this planning work right now, it will take at least 12 to 18 months to start and end this planning phase, pre-planning phase, I call it. So in that, instead of waiting, we should do some, some progress. So it will put our city in a better position to get those state and federal grants in future. And that could be in the amount of maybe $10 million, could be $25 million. We don't have the numbers yet, but this project has a bigger dream. Initially, when it was selected, it was $150 million. So we have big dreams for city, for Arcata, which is divided by the highway. So we can do big improvements and there will be grants in future. So we need to just make some progress in this. So with that, I will go maybe a few slides.
Good evening. Thanks, Nature, for the introduction and background on the project. So this slide is a little bit, a photo that I wanted to share. It shows the center, center of Arcata, obviously. It's a map from about the 1900s. And I find it interesting that on the far right side, where there's like an orange, light orange highlight, that's E Street that had a railroad going through that. And in about 1950s or so, an expressway was built there to alleviate the traffic that was on the G and H Street coming through the center of town. And then, as we all know, in the 70s, the, the expressway was upgraded to a full freeway, connecting 299, 101, and 255 around the bay. And that's how it exists today. As a result of this development of freeways for the vehicles, a lot of housing that can be seen, you know, on the grid there on the bottom of this picture from 1948, before the expressway went in, was eliminated. And as a result, the neighborhoods on either side of the highway have, have, have been impacted, have been bifurcated by the highway. And the, the project that we have been working on, known as the Reconnecting Arcata project, aims to, to address those historic harms, the historic impact, specifically in the Valley West area, central Arcata, and in the Gateway area. And these are some historic brainstorms and sketches that have been developed prior to me becoming involved in the project. But I know, Nature, maybe you can speak to these because I'm not as familiar as you.
Yes. So when I mentioned earlier that we were selected by the state to present a grant application, and this was one of the concepts that we presented, the goal was... Let me go a little bit back. Caltrans, our state, they have realized that in 60s and 70s, in the name of highway, we have built a lot of highways. However, in the process of building highways, we have taken a lot of property, which could happen potentially for housing, park, or any recreational area that has been taken by the highway. So one of the ultimate goal of this program is to reconnect that back and provide that housing and community space that was taken by highway to connect it back. So when we submitted the grant application, one of the options that was presented was to definitely having a lot of crossing over the highways. But one of the options was we called it a cap that will cover the portion of US 101 between 14th and 17th Street. That will give you approximately area of five acres that could be used for community space, potentially, you know, could be recreational space, could be housing apartments and anything along those lines. So these are the concepts that we presented and that's how we were selected. So this is how it looked like. It was a look of when we covered the 14th to 17th, fully connected, people not have to go through highway. There will be five acres of area connected, connecting east and west Arcata upgrades. But with that, you know, we'll take some, definitely, it's a lot of ask from the city team to you, asking to use general fund to do the transportation project. However, this could be for the future economic development. In some ways, we see this as a bigger economic development that will happen in the city in future. Or this is not like a one-year project. This is like a long-term. I call it ten to twenty-year project and we are starting it today. And we got to start it sooner than state wants us to start. If you have questions, we'll go. But also, I want to share this one. This is a three D image was constructed in, as a model by one of the local architects when he was going to school, School of Architects in early nineteen nineties. Here. This is US one oh one. Cal Poly Humboldt here. That crossing that goes on one oh one. He used the wood blocks to create the city that was divided by one oh one. As a part of his senior project, the vision was to connect, add more bridges to increase connectivity and use the right-of-way area, which is a dead space for housing or community living. So this is nothing new we are talking about. This has been talked about for more than twenty years. We're just trying to implement that in some way. Yeah, it was a physical woodworks. I would even name that person Jake Johnson. He works for the county right now and his dad was our fantastic woodworker, worked for the city for more than thirty years. Every single piece of wood you see, he, he had dusted it.
It's all, it's all his.
Could you orient me just on the far right, the first wooden block?
I would say this is like a seventh street.
Okay, thank you.
Eleventh, fourteenth, not perfectly to scale, but this is a senior project done in his garage. And he had this model until maybe a few years ago, then he had to do painting. He could not find it or it was destroyed. But at least he had the image. So there that does.
He's currently an architect for the county.
Yes. Now we'll take any questions if we have.
All right, sorry. I have to admit, I'm a little conflicted by this. I mean, here when we got that word, I'm down and accept it, speech, and it's really, really exciting. But super skeptical that we're gonna fund that choices in our budget. And I also understand how less and how, I mean, it's I don't think there's any argument that this is like a really awesome thing. I just I am skeptical that we're gonna get any money back. And I'm just really afraid to spend a large amount of money in a year when we're having budget woes.
So when I Can I ask a question based off of that? Because it looks like Nature was about to kind of respond to that too. But like, I mean, what if we spend this money out of the general fund? Is there a way that these could be recouped if, if the grant does come through? I mean, what does that look like if this funding is, you know, fully secured? And then just remind me too, because I know some of it's like state-funded, some of it's federally funded. How is that kind of broken up and what's in jeopardy?
I can see being a little bit skeptic on this one. And it's a lot of money. I get it. I'm very optimistic that money may come in different ways, in small chunks. Since we've been like, we've been working closely with our local senators, our state representative in so many ways. But in the last six months, and we have sent a letter to keep the money in the budget. They just passed the budget. We are not sure if they have included, but we are forcing them, pushing them in the best way we can, writing letters and telling them to keep the money. So may not happen this budget, but it will happen maybe mid-year or next year. I think I'm hopeful because this is a great project. Caltrans team has put this pilot project together. So they are optimistic. So that's the reason I'm optimistic because the people who have put this project together, they think they can do this project. It may not happen today, but it will happen in next two, one or two years. To answer your question, council member, safer is it will be hard to recoup the funds. And that's why the reason I said it's a match fund and we are spending our match fund and we can tell every single grant when we apply that this, we city use this as a match fund toward the project. It's hard, it's hard, it's right now that we are planning is all state fund through the state. But during this planning process, it will help us to get federal funds, once we do that. And if I say that today, it doesn't sound right, but two years ago, for similar project to federal reconnecting communities grant, federal grant was awarded in the amount of five hundred million dollars to the Portland to build a cap which covers the highway to connect the communities. So I'm still optimistic under right now in the federal, it's not exciting. There's not a lot of money there. But it will change, you know, the government changes every two, four years. So I'm hopeful it will change in some ways and there will be some money flowing now, economy going down. But today the interest went down. So it will happen some ways. So cannot promise anything. I'm just like saying, like, I think we should, as a match fund, we should at least move forward in some ways.
So So when Nature told me that we were going to be cut out of the budget at that time, I got in touch with the city manager for the city of South San Francisco. And we also got in touch with the people for the southern part of San Diego that were part of it so that we could start working collaborative around trying to get the funding. And so we've changed some of the funding sources. We've asked for less as time goes by. Do you, should we take a break?
Because I want to ask how to answer questions. So don't leave.
So we've, we've changed some of the requests and we've been working with the legislature, our, our senator and our congressman to see if there's a possibility of getting less money and getting some money possibly. I don't know how that'll play out in the budget because the money right now for the budget is going all towards fire. And that's the number one thing that the governor wants to do is fire. But I think that we have an advantage because we have three different districts, three different representatives in California because we're in different areas and they're working with their legislators. So I don't know how it'll play out. I can understand the concerns. It's, but it is sort of an exciting thing if we have a possibility for the future. It may not be in my lifetime, but it might be in other people's lifetimes that they'll be able to have this actually happen.
Um, Tabitha, where is this going to come from? What are we going to have to cut to make this, is it going to have to cut of?
At this point, it's coming out of your general fund reserves. So it's going to come out of that money that when we talk about potentially buying land or project, doing up the total. It's, it's that money that you've saved over the years in the general fund that's set aside for potentially special projects, big projects, and, you know, high priorities of the city council. So that's really what you have, you have to decide because if we spend this five hundred thousand dollars today, this project may come forward, get grant money, it may be an amazing project, or we could spend it and not necessarily get it, or it takes years for that to come around on some level. So it's an investment that you would be making, but, but it does mean that that money is not, because it's one-time money, that money isn't available for something else in the future. So it's really looking at your priorities and making that decision. And what, what I would also, you know, if, if the council has as, as a whole has questions or wants to dwell on this a little bit, you know, I think it would be okay to say that we could, you know, we could table this and you could come back and make a decision at a future meeting, or you can make a decision tonight, one way or the other.
Well, and I mean, the, the other thing, I think we just have two other, we have the Annie and Mary Trail, we also have SAMP sip. We have two other big connecting things. Projects going on right now as well.
Well, can I ask off that? Because if, I mean, if we do table this for now, I mean, will we know more information about the state budget if we say, you know, hold off on this three months, six months, you know, what is that a realistic timeline to think about that we might know more soon and then feel more comfortable making this decision?
I know, we've been pushing this for a while. So I would I would say in three months, we can know more. There's no guarantee that we will get or not. Kind of on the Maybe I just maybe add maybe one more thing. I said, you know, Annie and Mary Trail, great project, fully funded. Trying to use least of general fund. We are in our budget. We have only planned for fifty thousand and hope, we are hoping not to use that. Sunset and LK Wood project, twenty million dollar project. Fifty millions through grants, two point five through partnership to Cal Poly, one point five to Caltrans, city funds, maybe half a million. So I think we have to invest some ways, match fund in a bigger scale project. We have, we have to show some commitment to get the money. So this is our commitment showing that we are willing to pay half a million dollar lease payers. Whatever that number is, five million, ten millions, fifteen millions. We have to do that. And we've been great in last ten years because of the measure D, because of the street funds. We have matched, showed Annie and Mary Trail project of Sunset and LK Wood, even SAMP sip. Every single project we spend, we submit a grant application, we show the match funds through measure D.
So before we table this, can I have an opportunity to speak? As pointed out, you know, the SAMP sip, which is focusing on southern part of Arcata. And here's my concern. Is if we don't invest in this, this might be the only opportunity to connect Valley West, which is desperately needed. And I, I realize that it's, you know, it's something that is coming out of our general fund, but I feel like it is an investment in that when, if we are preparing this, then when that money comes, there's less of an argument to be made that we've already moved forward. We've already put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. I feel like we should move forward on this. As pointed out, the SAMP sip is connecting South Arcata. We don't have anything right now on the burner, back burner, or otherwise that's going to help. And it says Boulevard. Well, connecting highways to boulevards is one oh one Valley West Boulevard. Just feels sometimes that North Arcata just falls between the cracks. And here's an opportunity that we can grab it. And, and I also was not, I was reticent at first because I had heard apparently misinformation that we were not going to include Valley West in this. So I'm really thrilled to hear that we're doing this. I did read through the RFP, the proposal. And I love the idea that they're going to be bringing in the community, that they were talking about bringing in Spanish-speaking translation, as well as headsets if needed. With the majority of the Spanish speakers that live in Arcata are actually out in North Arcata Valley West. So I would love to invest in this. I think it's worthwhile. And, and finally, we will have an opportunity for Valley West residents.
So one, one of the things I've been, I've been thinking about is that when we went down to get the money and Connie Stewart was on one of the boards that approved it. She said that all the other, the two other cities had done a lot of work, community work, and that we had not done a lot of community work. And that this is part of getting our community work done that we need to do. And so I think that we have to look at it, that it's, it's a future, it's a future plan. And, and I think that we, through this, we'll be able to be better situated and, and not and the re, another reason we got it is we're a rural area. So they, they were looking at rural areas, urban areas, and sort of the town down in San Diego is in between. So I think that we're one of the three that they chose looking at that. And I think we, it would be good for us to be able to see what we can do about moving forward on this because we could prove that rural areas can actually do what urban areas can do. And we could get that work that we haven't done out of the way and moving. I know every time you pick up the paper and you read anything or our news, you see that we're a sanctuary state, we're a sanctuary city. And everyone that is a sanctuary, anything is not getting funded by the government. And that they're pulling all these funds away. Eventually, I don't know what will happen in the next five to ten years. But we'll be in a place possibly to do this because it won't be something that goes on the shelf and just stays there. Anyway, that's my feeling about it.
And I do understand that we need to be forward-thinking, but we also need to be forward-thinking about our budget. I mean, I just feel like I have to be a little bit pragmatic here and like take a step back. And I we've been, you know, pretty generous, generous with our reserves and things that we're excited about and things we want to do. But like right now, I just want to pump the brakes for a second and maybe have some conversations with Tabitha and kind of see where we stand and what this is going to mean for our reserves long term. Not that I'm not super excited about this project because it's amazing, but I, I don't want to put the city in.
So would you feel comfortable tabling it for all two, two months?
If we're going to vote right now, I wouldn't vote for it. But if we want to push it back.
And see how the govern, what the governor does with all the bills that are on his desk, et cetera?
Well, I think based on the email that I got today, they have signed the bill. We're just trying to figure out what's in that bill. Is our program in that signed bill or not? Here's maybe if you want to feel a hundred percent confident and we want everybody to vote yes. So let's maybe wait. We can bring this item maybe in two weeks or four weeks when the time is right. We have put a lot of grant applications, maybe hearing in RFQ. But you know, at the same time, more we delay, we are kind of on the project. They want Mayor mentioned, like, they want city to put some, some initial investment in some ways. We have to show that commitment to get funding in future.
Um, I, I am, I am definitely excited about this project. And I think we've also already put a lot of staff time into trying to bring, you know, this to the point that it's at. And I definitely, you know, kind of hear a lot of what Alex was saying and what Nature was saying about putting that kind of good faith forward. However, I do, you know, kind of like the idea of maybe, maybe tabling it just because things are so constantly changing right now in what's happening with the state budget. It might be nice to have a little bit more information on that, just to kind of empower that decision as well. And also I know we, we got to get business done when we're not all here. But I, this is like one of those things. I'm like, I wonder what Stacy thinks about that. Because again, just her being our HCOG person and was so, you know, kind of involved in, in the, the transportation aspect of this and a lot of that. So I, I would be, you know, happy to, to hold off right now. But I, I do think that this is something that we should pursue moving forward with because we've already put a tremendous amount of staff time into it. And I, and I think that partnership that we have too with Cal Poly and with Caltrans is something that's really special. And can really, you know, kind of push and advance this project forward in a way that's going to be positive for the city. It's going to have, you know, that, that kind of economic development investment long-term in the city to provide an opportunity to be able to create, you know, yeah, more amenities, better, you know, transit hubs, more housing, these kind of things that we talk about all the time. And you know, that, that is ten, twenty, thirty, you know, years down the line. But it is, you know, then this, this amount, this, you know, half a million for right now is, is a drop in the bucket compared to, you know, that long-term planning. So.
Well, I just want to suggest another idea. What happens, we want to have good faith during this period of time while we're waiting. So I'm wondering if we could appropriate a smaller amount of money and have the additional plan in two weeks or a month or something to appropriate additional. So when we're dealing with the legislator, legislature, and our legislators, they will realize that the council has said, yes, we, we want to put this forward. And we're, we're saying, yes, we're going to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars forward, let's say. And they can see that we're committed instead of saying, oh, let's wait a couple of weeks and see what they are going to do. And from our, you know, we can always rescind this. If we, if we can make this decision and it doesn't, whatever, I would say that in two weeks or a month, we'd say, well, nope, nope, we've changed our mind.
Yeah, all I want really is a couple of weeks to meet with our finance director and like wrap my head around. They, I mean, that's, and also there, that was a really good point. I would really love to hear Stacy. I mean, weeks, that's reasonable with that. I don't, I don't want, I mean, if we're going to do it, I'd rather do it full bore and go with five hundred thousand dollars instead of a half. You know, thing. So let's just, can we wait two weeks?
Um, I concur. Five hundred or go home, or five thou, sorry. I would like to hear state or council member at Consulor weigh in. That is important.
Well, and I feel like kind of, yeah, a, a two and two right now for half.
Well, and I feel like kind of, yeah, a, a two and two right now perhaps. So we, we need that fifth lot.
No, I would say we want five. I think this is a project that will be in the committee for so long that it's, will be good to get five rather than get three, two or four, one or something along those lines. I think we are shooting for five. So how about we bring this back? We will have a close conversation with the finance director and city manager and the city team. Trying to figure out the best way. We have some options. We can bring four to you and see how we can be scaled back or bring some version of that, that maybe we all can agree on. So let's work on that and we'll bring this item back in two weeks.
Okay, so I was going to say, well, it'll be three, I think it's three weeks. But for our next meeting in October, our first meeting in October, that we'll bring this back, it'll be an agenda item.
It will be.
Are you agreeable, everyone? Okay.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, yeah, there we go. So I can open a public hearing on this. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. And I found this a fascinating visionary dream concept when I first heard about it a few months ago. And some things came to mind. It's going to take a long time. It's going to take a lot of money. But I also, so practically, I think about how long it's taken for the Indianola cutoff, overpass and all to happen and the disruption and some of the danger it has presented in current time with trying to prevent danger and, and improve safety in the long run. So projects like this, especially that involve Caltrans and a major thoroughfare are really something to consider its impact on communities. So that's one thing. The other thing is climate action. We haven't yet dealt with the regional climate action plan. And I think that will be an important part of what we look at as to what our vision is for how we move and live and adapt in our community to what's to come, the expectations for climate change. So that needs to really be taken into consideration. And the third thing is the equity issue. Oftentimes, when I think about adding land back and connectivity to the community, I went and attended a few years ago, maybe it was just three years ago, a land back presentation on campus by the Native American Department. And they are very, very, very vocal about the concept of land back. And maybe this, I hope, is being discussed with the Wiat and others in that sense because if we are going to design things in kind of an urban way, then maybe we need to honor what people before Arcata did with the land. So, and also appreciate what Councilmember White had to say about connectivity existing already. What are we going to do for North Arcata? You know, because it truly is, I keep intending, intending to ride my e-bike out there and I don't have enough juice on my bike. I haven't charged it enough to make it to and back from there on occasion. So we need to improve the connectivity of what's existing already before we even talk about, you know, putting a roof over the freeway.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I just want to add, you know, in the nineteen seventies, when the freeway went through, we lost about two hundred living units. And people have always said to me, well, why does North Arcata have more housing? And it's very difficult to make up for a loss of two hundred units at that time and to figure out how to get those built fast enough to change that. And so I just look at this as a possibility that we'll be able to have more land to build on as we grow and the, the community becomes needing that kind of land. So at this point, I say we're going to table this until our next regular scheduled meeting. Do we need a vote on that or?
I don't think so. I think we'll just place it on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you okay? Okay, just checking, checking. All right, so with that, we're going to go on to see, receive and approve an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital improvement program. CIP presentation, please, thank you.
Good evening again. So as you know, we've been working on our CIP project for a long time. We plan CIP only for a year. Two years ago, we, five years. There was second draft of five year CIP. We should do as we do our budget annual basis to reach our capital project. We still do our approval of the budget amount for annual basis, but we are planning to be looking into future, what all things we need. So I think that CIP is a tool that helps us to financially plan the project for the future. So that's the idea. This is our guiding document. So one request I'm going to make today like is there are some typos and some misinformation in our capital document. So what I would request is please receive the presentation today. I'll give you the update on the projects and the CIP projects. However, table this or I'll bring this as a consent item in the, in two weeks with corrected documents, then you can approve it. So this is just review, not approve the CIP document today because.
Okay, thank you, because I found some errors and I pointed them out. So we need to correct those. No, no, not those kind of, not those. No, no, it was, it was other funding sources, et cetera.
This time too, it'd be great.
Yeah, we, we used our old templates from our prior draft and we forgot to change some of the items. So that's error on our part and we'll rectify that before we bring it back to you. So with that, our CIP highlights. This is the best picture of the year. This is the kudos to our street crew, city staff who work for the city of Arcata. And every presentation I do this year, I'm going to have this picture on my slide. So this is at Bay, Bayview Street, next to Little Pickle Hole, next to Pickle Hill Road, which has not been paid since it was constructed. We know the books for a long time. Finally, this summer got paid. People were so excited. One of the person came out excited, giving shot of gin with short glasses to our staff. And our, our staff are very excited and they're like, ask my supervisor, can I, if I can have that? And supervisor said, no. But this is like an amazing picture, like how people work and how people get excited. Now, we always get complaints from people, not always, like sometime we do get complaints, but how people are sometimes appreciative of what we do. And they are going beyond in their freezer to dig a bottle of gin and short glasses for our city staff. So it's kudos to our street crew and the city team, led by Scott Lackey. Okay, so that's that fun part, CIP. As I said, this is our guiding document for our projects. As you can see, for this year, we have planned for sixty four million dollar approximately project. And you can see out of that sixty four million dollar project, seventy three percent is through grants and excellent sources. We are using minimum of, minimum possible of our general fund in this capital project. And we try to do other projects through our enterprise fund, water and wastewater. And remainder is through grants. So now our team is amazing at getting the grants and we are always doing that because it's hard to do the project with only general fund or money that we get from state. This is another slide that shows the distribution, like most of the money is spent on streets here. Bigger number, twenty five million dollars from Sunset LK Wood, because that's a twenty million dollar project or eighteen million dollar project, so that looks as high. Wastewater project still in progress and we're planning for future. Same thing, water supply, you approved the project a few months ago and now it's in construction. In the parks and forest project, that's an Annie and Mary Trail project. So that's like a higher number and land and facilities are our community center project that we are working on. So I'll just go through some completed projects, then on design project and then the planning projects. So in our CIP that we are actively working on. Old Arcata Road completed, done. Arcata Library completed, done. Edward Park Phase One completed, done. Ballpark done, it looks great. Beautiful, people enjoy the craft game, that's great. So kudos to the contractors and the city team. These are the project, they are under construction. Plunket Waterline Project, right in the Jacoby Creek District. I would say this project is currently eighty percent complete and we are on schedule to complete this project by end of November. And we'll be done with the Plunket Improvement Project. City, citywide steel waterline replacement project just started. We are doing good. We are, I would say, just under ten percent done, you know, and we're hoping to be done by end of next year, twenty twenty six. This will be a continued project for a long time. And we are planning for our Phase Two of Steel Line Waterline Project in our CIP. Under construction, I'm very happy to say that we are ninety three percent complete. Right Laura? Laura is leading that project, wastewater project. She gave an amazing presentation maybe a few week, few months ago at the council meeting. So we are on schedule, not scheduled, I would say we are a bit behind a few months, but it's a good track. Ninety three percent is a big, big achievement for the project. We've been working on that project for the last four years. And Annie and Mary Trail project, we talked earlier a little bit about that. We've been in the books for a long time, approximately seventy million dollar project, all by grants and partnership through our local partners. Going to start next week. And the trail between Sunset and the housing project will be completed before December of this year. That's in, in their contract, it's November, but I'm saying December because of the rain and all, it may get pushed. But hope is by, before January, first that trail will be in place. As I said earlier, we are doing roof project for our community center, solar and new roof, little lake improvements. We are mitigating that side, removing some hazardous material from that. That is, I would say, also eighty percent complete. Community center project just started, so I would say just, we are under five percent on that. We are just reviewing the submittals, no actual physical work on that yet. But still the target is to finish that project by end of this year. Not physically this year, twenty twenty five. And you're seeing a lot of street work. We've been doing all the sidewalk work and annual paving and strapping work is complete. You will see this, all this strapping work is complete on Eighth Street, Ninth Street, Gin Tully, Eighth Street and the sidewalk. In the last two years, we have constructed more than two and a half mile of sidewalk in the city of Arcata. That includes Old Arcata Road project and all the sidewalk project. Big kudos to our community development team who got the housing grant through Sorrow Place and we are using that money to do all the sidewalk improvements throughout the city, intersection improvement throughout the city. So that's a big thing. Normally, we just, before that, we used to only spend hundred thousand dollars on the sidewalk. But now, last few years, we have spent like two point five million dollars on just on the sidewalk. So that's huge from, again, from grants. Project in design phase. So this is the most recent of the printer layout of our Sunset Avenue and US one oh one interchange project. Right now, we are at sixty five percent design we received from our team. And we are reviewing that with our team and, and the contractors tomorrow evening between five and seven PM. There is a public meeting to discuss this project and get some feedback from the community. So we'll be holding that at Arcata Elementary School tomorrow between five and seven PM. Again, this project is led by Laura Calitak and she's here. And she'll be there tomorrow as well. Project in design phase, still that we have a whole list. We don't have pictures because we are still in design phase. We will have pictures when we finish the design and have some construction work. So we have sewer inflow infiltration project in design phase. We will be starting that project early next year, construction, that's the goal. Edward Park basketball court improvements, that's also in the books. We have started the survey work and we'll be starting some design work and do some construction work early next year. We are planning for our annual payment project to bid that early next year again. And we just started our first street lift station, which gets all the sewer from Sunnybury area at the first lift station. And from that, it gets lifted to the wastewater plant. So it's in the work, in the design phase, early design phase. And also, we are doing bike inflation infrastructure project, still in early design phase, still planning to do the construction next summer, twenty twenty six. So these are the design projects. And then we have some planning project. We mentioned earlier SAMCIP, you got a very long presentation two weeks ago on that one. That was very exciting. So it is in the planning phase. Similarly, we have a, through the same grant, we have a safer to school project for the Fonte Nueva Charter School at James Road and Passory Avenue. So we are also working on that with the school and the neighborhood in that. So that's in the planning phase. And also, our favorite project is in the planning phase, Reconnect Arcata Project, which we will be seeing it again. Yeah, so this is it. So, but that's, that's a quick update on the slides. We don't need any approval because we will be making some minor adjustments to the CIP document and bring that item as a consent in two weeks.
Um, I just was, while I know it was included in the CIP project report itself, it would have been great to see the Carlson Park project because it's not in a planning phase. It's almost done.
Carlson project is complete. We did the ribbon cutting and I'm not sure why I missed it, but Carlson project is complete.
We get missed a lot, it's okay.
Oh my goodness gracious. So let's open the public hearing. I was going to just open it and then take it back to the council, but okay, go ahead.
I just want to thank you and your crews. And your crews are tearing up my whole neighborhood right now, replacing sewer pipes. And we always look at the big hole in the ground. But it's, it's amazing like how you guys, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate your whole team. And these are some really fundamentally great projects for Arcata. And I'm just proud to represent you. So thank you.
I want to give my love to engineering too. No. And just again, the, the personal touches, because I was thinking about Netra earlier today because Eighth and Ninth Street are like totally done now. And I got my, my special parking spot. And it was, it was completed because I said, and I told Karen years ago, there could be another parking spot here. I think we need, and then when I asked you about it, I said, oh yes, I know about your parking spot. And so it's just, it's really, it's nice to see the, the nimbleness and helpfulness of, of your staff too. And everything looks so great. Eighth and Ninth Street are awesome. And, you know, that's been a really nice change as somebody that lives on Ninth Street too, to have the one way and just how calm the traffic is and, you know, less, less incidences and hopefully starting to hear less incidences on Ninth and K Street too. So it's been, it's been a nice project to have completed. So thank you guys.
That's Kimberly.
I just wanted to do a big kudos also for, we have been wonderful in getting all of these amazing grants. So, yeah.
So with that, I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary and I'm most impressed, Netra, by the volume and the hugeness of what your team is doing. I had the opportunity to speak one to one of your engineers about the community center and the solar, the roofing and the solar project and the energy savings and the money savings and the grant monies that were available on that, just that particular project. And you need to brag about that kind of stuff more to people like me who are really concerned about energy conservation and adapting for the climate. I also would like to say, having looked at the disbursements list on the consent calendar, we give a lot of money to the portable toilets in our community and it's all for parks. And I went up to Carlson Park the other day and just opened the door to their toilet and it looked pretty good. And then, of course, you know, my concern is we don't have enough really decent bathrooms in our community in a lot of places, not just the parks and benches and maybe even trash bins. So the BB and B, not B and B, the BB and B, bathrooms, benches and trash bins. I know it's a small scale issue and it maybe is not in your exact apartment, but the big infrastructure, great. And the little stuff, you know, kind of matters too. Not a criticism, just needing to say that out loud. But I really appreciate especially the solar stuff that you're doing. And Sunday is on Sunday in Eureka.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. So our opportunity is to receive and approve the update, but we've been asked to hold off for two weeks or three weeks until our next meeting. So we will just move along. The next item on the agenda is is oral and written communication. I'm assuming someone would like to speak under oral and written communication and have three minutes. You all know the drill. Thank you for coming forward.
Hello, my name's Tricia Murphy and I'm here to talk about.
Hello, my name's Tricia Murphy, and I'm here to talk about the Sister City idea. I support that. I support you all signing the Calpers' letter, and I support boycotting Israel. That's a peaceful way to, to get a terrorist state to stop doing what they're doing. And I thought I'd focus my, my comments tonight on lies that the state of Israel and Zionists tell. In 1948, "A land with no people for a people with no land" was a big slogan that was used to enable the Zionist who came to Palestine to steal the land from mostly Palestinian people, Christians, Muslims. There was less than 7% Jewish people living there. The Palestinians were ethnically cleansed during the Nakba, which is the Great Catastrophe. 500 villages were destroyed. Israel says that they, they didn't want us Jews to be there, so we had to fight the Palestinians. Well, the, the truth is, and the Palestinian army, the truth is, there was no Palestinian army. There's, there's never been a Palestinian army. There's been a rebel group, Hamas. But there were just a few guys with hunting rifles. And Israel, backed by, by Britain, came in and stole that land. They said that they made the desert bloom. Palestinians, mostly Palestinians, and some Jewish people, made the desert bloom. There's a movie, a documentary, and, and some young Israeli folks got together and did their research. And they, they went back for, into the archives of Israel, and they requested the information about the Nakba. And they were denied that for a long time, but they found a way to get around that. And they found some Israelis who were actually there and, and took part in that. And there's a movie called Tantura. And I highly recommend that people watch that. And it's, it's very, it's very disturbing. They still laugh about what they did, whether it was raping people, burning people, like they were just being naughty. It's very strange. In 1967, Israel went in and, and did a surprise attack because they knew that eventually Egypt would be armed, and they took more land. And, and the, the plan from the very beginning, and the first president spoke about this, and I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, was to ethnically cleanse Palestine of Palestinians. I think the biggest lie, the biggest lie that gets told, and the most frequently, is that the Palestinians hated these people because they were Jews.
Thank you so very much.
Because they were Jews.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll go on to council reports. And would you like to begin first?
Okay. We're at the first meeting of, or we're at the point in the month where I haven't had a lot of my meetings yet. But I did attend, I'm the RCEA Board Representative to RCEA's Community Advisory Committee. And so I went to that meeting last week. And it's always a really good one because it's kind of the more nitty gritty group of people that are definitely, you got to be pretty focused on energy and everything like that to want to be part of that group. So it's a nice preview for what usually our board will be seeing. But we talked just about RCEA's upcoming update to our power procurement goals and our power mix, and this goal that is looking more and more possible of being greenhouse gas emission free for RCEA's power mix by 2030, which is really exciting. And, and then we also had an update from the BTAC, which is the Biomass Technical Advisory Committee, which RCEA put together with a group of, you know, some folks from the CAC, just experts kind of in the, in the field on biomass, forest health, people from the Sawmill, people from the Air District. And they kind of basically have a transparency audit of the Humboldt Sawmill Company Power Plant twice a year and kind of go over those, look at, you know, how many violations were there? How, is it improving? Are they replacing equipment? What is the Humboldt Sawmill Company doing to, you know, lower emissions or prevent shut offs, things like that, that, you know, then they used to need to use diesel to start it back up. So it's always an interesting report to look at and kind of see where, you know, that's at. And it's a nice little level of transparency that RCEA gets to have over that, you know, power that we procure from biomass. So it was a really interesting meeting, and that's all I got. Equity Arcata meeting is next week, and RCEA Board is next week as well.
Thank you. Shall we go down to, we'll start at the end with Meredith and come back.
Yeah, I had a really long Lafco meeting today. I'm Vice Chair of Lafco, and we've been talking, this is the third continuation. We've been talking about annexations, and right now, we're talking about the Neyland Fire District. But it's just really interesting how like little things, like the Neyland Fire District and what they're going through will have reverberations because some of the things that they're going through are going to end up affecting the Arcata Fire District. And so I just find all of it very interesting. It's one of the ancillary jobs that I really enjoy on the council. HWMA, I mean, yeah, very exciting. But I just want to recognize our wonderful film commission. The movie that was filmed in Arcata and other places in Humboldt County will be coming out next week, and it's getting like great reviews. And I'm just really proud that things like that can get filmed in Humboldt. So good job, Cassandra.
Hey, Kimberly.
So I'm excited. I get to leave next week to the National Association of Latino Elected Officials for the Building Resiliency Today for tomorrow's Hazards Conference in Texas on Disaster Preparedness. I also attended the Redwood, REDAC, Redwood Region Economic Development Commission Loan Committee today. I am learning so much on this, and I also love the opportunity to say yes to local loans. So this month's REDAC meeting was canceled, so I will not be attending again until October, but I will be attending the Cal Poly Humboldt Mason Meeting in late afternoon on Monday. And I, too, am looking forward to the Equity Arcata Next Week meeting. And also, Kuna had a free produce day yesterday in Valley West. All are welcome from everywhere. It's a bi-monthly free produce, and hopefully, it will be weekly here soon. That's all I have.
So the North Country Fair is this weekend, and one of the things is Humboldt Transit Authority will have their bus there. And they will have Bigfoot, so people can get their pictures taken with Bigfoot, because Bigfoot will be wandering around, bringing people towards the bus. And they've done that in the past, the last couple of years. And I do have these things eventually. I'll give you all from HTA. They're back in my box. But one day, I'll pull them out here and bring them out to the meeting. And besides that, we had a homeless services meeting today. That'll be an update. We're going to want to have some time before the council and let everybody know what's going on with legislation and funding sources from the federal government, and how that's going to affect us all. Besides that, I, I'm here.
I'm sorry. I just, I'm really proud that I've been on the Planning Committee to help plan a women's leadership conference that's happening, gosh, next Thursday.
The 25th.
And it was an honor to be on the Planning Committee, and I think Alex is one of the speakers. So that's awesome. There are still some tickets left. I think you can get them on the Chamber website.
Yeah, today they announced on CERT, there were five tickets left. What I'm involved in is a panel, and putting a panel together of people that are of different ages that have been involved in, in creating businesses or economic development for their counties. So I put that together. We're going to get together and have a meeting to talk about which questions, because we have seven people for one hour. So it's going to be a fast thing. So have to figure that out. So it's coming.
Could I just add one more thing, too? So I'll be attending a webinar tomorrow through Nellie of the National Association of Latino Elected Officials. And we will be, the highlight will be about the cuts in Medicare, Medi-Cal, and of course, for California, it would be partnership, and how local jurisdictions might be able to help folks that are going to be suffering. So.
Yep, that's part of, that's part of our report that'll happen. And would you like to add something more?
I'm good.
You sure? Okay, with that, we have no further, we are not going to be adjourning to any future meetings. At this time, we have no closed sessions, no closed session reports, and we're adjourned. And thank you.